I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry to make you wait, but it is good to be with you tonight because we look forward to this meeting as a great way to, I won't say kick off the year because we're well into the year, but to really get a sense of goals for all the different buildings and the departments. So we look forward to a good discussion. And before we go there, we just have a few orders of business. The first being whether or not there are any comments from the public regarding any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item five, which is to adopt tonight's agenda with one revision, which is item 2.5, which was added to executive session, personal matter, individual employee. So with that revision, I would ask for a motion to adopt-
Who to adopt as amended?
A second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. And then I would ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda, item six for personnel, seven for special services, and then eight for business.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And with that, I want to thank the BHGF because we voted to take $20,000 into the district for Insta grants for the year, which is a great program that was adopted a number of years ago at the BHGF for grants that come along during the year that are smaller in size, but nevertheless significant and it really adds to the student experience. And this transfer allows us to be able to fund those grants should they materialize and be both approved by the BHGF and then accepted by us. All right. So with that, we go to item nine.
Oh, yes. Board of Education Special Recognition. Isn't it a coincidence that you're all here to present every year when it's Board of Education Appreciation Night? So I do want to say that we have some gifts for our board members here. We're not allowed to give you gifts. So these are T-shirts and some cupcakes. And I just wanted to talk about the board's role here. We have been through one long ride with COVID and this pandemic recovery that we're facing right now. We do see the difficulty that boards of education face in neighboring communities from issues stemming in those communities. We do not have a board that always thinks the same way as one another. And that's something actually that I cherish as a superintendent, is hearing different viewpoints and voices from board members. There has never been a moment where I have questioned the commitment of each of these board members to every single student in this community and to all of our faculty, staff, and administrators. So I want to thank you. I know that we chose these professions and we are compensated for this work that we do. The only compensation you have, which I think may be greater, is that you are changing a community, right? Your presence here and your modeling of civility and of civil discourse, your modeling of how you explore each situation to feel that it is the right thing for Byram Hills and the right thing for all of our students, is the most commendable thing that could be spoken about for a board of education. I feel lucky to have every single member of this board of education, even Ira. And I just wanted to take this night to thank you and to recognize you for that. Our community's strength comes from your leadership as our board of education. I know that you take responsibilities for different liaisons and different committees. You do a lot of work on policy. We already met tonight for finance advisory, for the audit committee, for our executive session. This is a lot of time asked of you and time away from your families. And I just want you to know that we came back to school when many schools did not. We came back in full force with full confidence that we would be supported by our board of education, and we were. So thank you so much for all of that. And I know that no one has a refrigerator that can hold a magnet anymore, but maybe a little bit of Scotch tape to put this to your fridge. And I know that some board members sent me a picture tonight. Larry Stangle-
I always send my picture to every member.
Every year.
I send my picture.
Ira Schulman. How many years I had?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Lori Kaner. Thank you, Lori. And our new board member, Petri Verma. Thank you, Petri. No, I like walking. This is the only steps I'm getting to do. Mia Di Pietro. And to our vice president, Jason Berlin. And to our president, multiple times over, Scott Levy.
Thank you for those very kind words. And we are very fortunate, I think, as a board to be in this community because, and we understand and we welcome the fact that many in our community, like everywhere across the country, have views about what's going on in our schools, whether it's COVID protocols or a lot of different topics. But the dialogue is really, we're very fortunate, been very civil and been very cordial and constructive. So we appreciate being in a community that A, values education, and B, really is great about having that dialogue with us that's all important. And I thank my fellow board members for, I couldn't ask to be serving with the better group of people, and for the partnership that we have with you, Jen, and with the district is just extraordinary. And we know that everyone in this room cares so deeply about the kids in this community. And that makes all the difference. That makes serving a pleasure and not a burden. So thank you all.
Do I get any time for rebuttal?
No. That's why you're sitting next to me. No.
I do want to say one thing in all seriousness. The strength of this board really comes from our relationship with the administration and with you who are sitting out there tonight. We need you and we need the administration to make us the functioning board that we are. If you read the news now, you can see what's happening to boards of education all over the country. And it's not a pretty sight. So for me, and hopefully I can speak to my fellow board members, the strength of our relationship with Jen and your team and with all of you out there really make what we need to do possible. So thank you.
Well said. All right. So why don't we move to one quick item before the curriculum conversation, which is item 11.1, which is our external audit report. And I'm going to invite Christopher Angada to come up to address us. We did meet beforehand in the audit committee and had an opportunity to ask questions, which was very helpful and great. But if you want to just make a public presentation as well, that'd be very helpful.
I think your summary would be perfect.
Yes. Thank you so much. And good evening, everyone. I am Christopher Angada, partner of the firm, Naraki Smith. On behalf of my partners, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board of education for your continuing confidence in retaining us as your independent auditors. I'm here this evening to present the results of the fiscal 2021 audit for the Byram Hills Central School District. To start off, just to confirm the scope of our services, Naraki Smith was retained by the school district to perform an audit of its financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2021, in accordance with our professional standards. As far as the conduct of the audit is concerned, or what I like to call audit readiness and responsiveness, I'd like to commend the district business office for its timely and accurate closing of the books and records. I'd also like to thank the business office for their excellent cooperation throughout the course of the audit. As far as the audit and the financial statements are concerned, I'd like to present this evening that we did issue a clean or a modified opinion in all of our auditors' reports, meaning that the financial statements of the Byram Hills School District present valid in all material respects in accordance with our professional standards. Looking at the district's financial position, overall, the district is in a good financial position, but certainly there are significant challenges to overcome in the future. This year, the general fund of the district had a positive change in fund balance. That fund balance was within the allowable limits of the New York State regulations, as well as the New York State tax cap. The capital assets of the district this year, net of depreciation, totaled $68.5 million. There was a transfer from the general fund to the capital fund of $1.1 million to fund district-wide improvements. And all the expenditure categories of the district this year were below budget, but those were directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic and recovery. As part of our audit, we also contemplated issuing a management letter presenting any findings or recommendations on approving accounting procedures and internal controls. I am happy to report to the board this evening that we cannot cite the district for any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. And that really does it for my prepared comments this evening. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have. And thank you again for the opportunity to meet this evening.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions that they want to answer?
Just a comment. Congratulations to Kelly and Susan. You make us look good. And having a clean report like this is all the school district really asks for.
Thank you. And thank you for your work on the audit.
It's a pleasure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, we just have to do one thing, which is get a motion to accept the 2020-21 fiscal year audit. All in favor? All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Susan, your work is never done.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
And you've got all of the people who email you all day long here to witness your work. Thank you, Susan.
Okay. So now we go to our special report number two, which is curriculum conversation.
Yes.
And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hello, 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 hello. Can you hear me back there, Dwayne? Okay. I know that this isn't the ideal, close-knit setting that we usually have for this kind of conversation, but I think it's going to be one that we're going to love anyway. So just, Tim is going to really be presenting this tonight, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the vertical alignment of the goals in this district and why that's so important, and how we always start with the district mission. We always have board of education goals that fall under the district mission, the administrators' goals, the teacher goals, and ultimately what we want at the end are the student outcomes. And how important that vertical alignment is of all of these goals, and how we develop that capacity, even, you know, if I look at the goal that Tim, Gina, and I put together about building the capacity of the leadership in this organization, that does start under our school mission. It is one of our board goals. And the ultimate goal out of it is to have student outcomes, which is to develop the leaders of the next generation. So if you look at it from that vertical alignment, I feel very confident that every one of the purpose statements that you're going to be reading in these goals gets to a student outcome. And we are trying to support, from the district office to our administrators, first, we find the strengths within each administrator to share those strengths with each other, which I think that we are honored to have in a district like ours. So every person who's a learner is also a teacher in some way, shape, or form. We have been able to look at student outcomes and to look at what we're working with regarding toolkits for leadership. So all of the administrators who are here tonight exemplify the holders of the toolkit of how to demonstrate leadership, learn more about leadership, and ultimately help students who can act as leaders on their own right. So this is a lot of work done by Tim Paltenaker. I say your praise all the time, and the collaboration of every single person here who has spent a significant amount of time since the summer working on these goals. So Tim, I turn it over to you, and thank you for this work that guides us and everything.
Thank you. Thanks to the board for your support. You have an electronic copy of the goals in your packet, and I have hard copies here if you need that. And it's working with this amazing team that makes me want to get out of bed every day and come to work because I know that they're having such an amazing impact on our students. So it's easy to collaborate with this group. I hate this setup, but we'll make it work. So we're all being flexible during this time. So I do want to talk about, just a couple of quick things before we jump into the conversation, is Jen talked about alignment. We know from research that successful schools and successful organizations have a very clear purpose, and we use our mission statement to really guide us. So when we develop these goals, we start in the summer at our administrative retreat, and we reflect on the previous year's goals and our success and the challenges and how we can overcome those challenges. As we're designing our goals for the year, we're always focused on this mission statement. This is our purpose as a district, and these are the outcomes we're trying to achieve for our students. So that's where we start. And as Jen mentioned, strong organizations have alignment across the organization on their goals and their purpose. So we start with the district mission, which feeds into the board of education goals, which then leads us to develop administrative goals. And as the teachers work, as our administrators work with their teachers, our tenure teachers write professional growth plans. We always keep that aligned with the administrative goals. And then as teachers are working on their growth plans, that has an impact on students. So that strong alignment is really done purposefully with intention to get from our mission statement directly to student outcomes at the end of the day. That's how we conceptualize our goals. The second thing I want to point out that's important in successful organizations is we know that successful systems have a very clear purpose, and we're constantly collecting evidence on our purpose. And it's an iterative process of are we, what does our evidence show, and do we need to tweak anything in our processes to get to that purpose and then collect more evidence? And it's that iteration that leads us to continuous improvement and success over time. So as you'll see in our goals document, they're purposefully aligned with the purpose statement on top, then looking at why that purpose statement's important. Then the middle column is the processes, the actions we're going to take to achieve the purpose. Then the results are the outcomes for students and the evidence we're going to collect. We added that new evidence piece this year. So we're challenging ourselves over the next few years to start figuring out a system to collect this evidence on the student outcomes that meet to our purpose so that we can continue that iterative process in really concrete ways. So that's our challenge today. And so in this conversation, the goal today is to really help you and help us in the community understand the purpose, to talk about our processes and what we're expecting for students. So I invite the board to jump in as much as you want, ask questions. I'll start some of the conversation, and then feel free to pick up with it, or if there's something in the goals document you want to ask about, just either get my attention or jump in, and we hope to make this as much of a discussion as we can. So thank you. And so let me start with, one thing to really think about is coming off of last year's work around, we've been very aware, and we talked a lot at our administrative retreat, about making sure we're attentive, as we were pre-pandemic, but even more so around the social and emotional development of students coming off the pandemic, that, you know, students just might be adjusting. And we're not sure what the world was like for students last year in all cases. And I think there were some extremes. We've interviewed a lot of students, spoke to a lot of students. And I think we have students at the extremes that really thrived in the setting and some who may be struggling and may still be. So we're working through that in terms of how we develop systems to support these students. So we want to always be aware of the social-emotional development while we're also having high expectations of academic performance for our kids. So we've talked before about balancing social-emotional development with academic rigor. So I do want that to be somewhat of a theme you'll hear me talking about anyway tonight. And we'll start with our youngest learners down at Coman Hill. And we'll mention Karen Eldon, our interim principal. Hi, Karen.
Hi.
So just to point you out to the board. And I know that in your goals and in the purpose statement, you talk about two main things, which is the social-emotional learning for students and how that is critical for these young students, and then also helping students become independent learners. So can you talk a little bit about that social-emotional piece at Coman Hill and what that looks like for these young learners and the resources that we have available to students?
Sure. Of course, excuse me. We're the first place that our students start their educational career in Byram Hills. So we strive to really provide a nurturing, caring community for them to thrive in. And while academics are always important and always at the forefront of what we do, their social-emotional growth, we feel, is also critical to their success. And as you said, Tim, they might come in as being dependent learners. Our goal is to get them to be independent learners as they leave Coman Hill, to prepare them for Wampus. So in our social-emotional resource toolkit, we have some developmentally appropriate programs, or not programs, the resources for each grade level. So kindergarten has, you know, an appropriate resource for them, and first grade and second grade. This year, we also formed a social-emotional committee, a team, to start to implement some of the pillars of the Character Strong program. So we're looking to add that to our resource toolbox, along with Second Steps and also our KELSO program.
Yeah, KELSO's choice is something I think the board is very familiar with, which is a problem-solving tool or strategy that students use to resolve conflict, conflict resolution. Second Steps being a problem-solving approach that students use. And then Karen mentioned Character Strong, which is a pilot social-emotional curriculum that we're looking at. And I'll ask Wampus, when we get to Wampus, to talk a little bit about that. We have convened with Gina, being part of that social-emotional learning team, to look at a K5 social-emotional learning curriculum. So David, do you want to talk a little bit about the elements of the Character Strong program and the benefits that that has on students?
Yeah, thank you. So Character Strong is a social-emotional program that we've started to implement in third grade this year through the Encore program. If you're not familiar with the Encore program, it's essentially, once a month, each class in third grade will meet with our new school counselor to do this curriculum. And what we really liked about the curriculum, as Tim mentioned, when we went through last spring with Gina, looking at different programs, what we really liked about this one was, just like students use investigations to learn math, or the Wonders program, which is the literacy program, it gives a very concrete way of practicing identified traits. So this program identified 10 traits that they found through their research were very important for school-aged children to kind of work with and understand and start to grapple with. So this program gives very specific structure of the kids to be able to work with these things, like courage and empathy, all these different things that they have structured activities for. And then the end goal is to be able to, they call it exit intentionally, which means you want to make it part of your routine. So we've been piloting this in third grade right now on a daily basis with the kids. And we also have a plan moving forward for fourth and fifth grade that's starting this week, actually.
So just to remind the board too, we are piloting this, and if we should decide we like this program and want to adopt it, it would come to the board through adoption, through our usual program adoption process. So David, who is implementing this program? Are the classroom teachers responsible for it?
So our first person that's really implemented and with the support of everyone in this room, so thank you, is our new school counselor, Annie Schmidt, who started, you know, this school year. And when I think of Annie, she actually joined us in the summer and spent a lot of time learning systems and being part of placement and data systems that really set us up for success. But she's the main person right now implementing it with the third grade through Encore. And then she'll also be doing push-in models with fourth and fifth grade. She's the main person right now, and one of the goals is to see how we can start to have teachers work with her more and more so we all have the common language as we move forward.
Can you talk a little bit more about the role of this counselor at the elementary level? That might sort of a new concept for some people in terms of what her responsibilities are. How is she being utilized, and what is the benefit she's having for kids?
Great. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so Annie, she really hit the ground running. Like I said, she started with us in July, where she was part of our entire placement week, where we're, coming from the middle school, learning about elementary placement, it really is a big undertaking. So she was part of that right from the start, to learn the systems and start to learn the children as we placed them. Part of data, the data placement, excuse me, the data system as well, that sets us up for success. She's meeting individual counseling sessions right now, group counseling sessions. She's part of grade-level meetings. She meets with Peggy and I on a regular basis. She's a crucial and instructional support team, which is a team where we discuss different strategies and to help kids. So, and I think one of the most important things that I really like what Annie's done is, she's so present. Every lunch and recess, arrival dismissal, if you drop your kids off in the morning, she's the very happy person out there as the kids pull right in with their parents. So she's been everywhere and is really, I mean, it's, what, October 12th today? I feel like she's been there for a long time. She's just in there soaking up the culture and learning the system at Wampus.
Scott?
One question on Character Strong, although in a way it's a more general question that you go for any new pilot of a curriculum. How do you, what is the best way to measure at the end of the year, the impact that it's had? And, I mean, is there ever any font to saying, let's give it to half the school the first year and see the difference? Or is it too complicated and it's better just to roll it out to an entire grade? And then if you do that, do you really know the impact that it has?
Yeah. So I think when you do a pilot project, it can happen different ways. When we've done math programs, we've sometimes done it only in a few classrooms. You know, with this, we just decided that we think all kids will benefit from it. And David and I were talking the other day just about how will we measure the success of this over time? How do you measure, like, a character trait, like persistence or empathy or what else, David? Courage? These are some of the traits. So we're going to have to study that a little bit, and we're already starting to think about how we'll measure that. In terms of like implementing it with half the class and not, I don't know if I would want to do a study in that way. You're sort of depriving a group of something, but you could. There's actually just decisions about whether you want to do that or not. I think some of it is, what are the outcomes we're hoping to achieve from this program? And do we see any change in that for your kids? Usually you're looking at the big year outcomes and something like this.
And I think that we have a lot of data, right, Peggy, from years prior, that this kind of program is really necessary for kids, particularly at Wampus. So our data existed before to warrant us doing this. This isn't, you know, just like a state initiative.
And one advantage we have with David being in his role now is David was a middle school counselor and knows very well the types of behaviors that he experienced at the middle school and could have some help in identifying that with working with Kim and Angela, what would we be seeing that might be different for kids? So we are starting to grapple with that already, but it's a great question. I think it's a challenge with character traits or these types of, what traditionally are called soft skills, but these learning dispositions. Thanks. Peggy, I don't mean to leave you out, but I do want to talk about, one thing in your purpose statement, you talk about wanting students to become confident in themselves. You talk about why confidence is important for these young learners at Wampus and what you mean by that?
Well, yes. I don't think we can ever underestimate confidence in a young child. If we think back to what we did last year, that was a pretty bold move on our part, opening up school for all of our children here at Wampus. And as we came back this year, we recognized quickly that we needed to just have a forward-thinking model as we recovered from the pandemic. Our children always need confidence. Those learning dispositions, confidence, courage, responsibility, perseverance, resilience, are what our learners at Wampus need in order to become independent, which is really the journey that they're on as they head to the middle school and the high school. And they can't have those learning dispositions unless we very carefully focus everything that we do on those outcomes for our children. So as we began to prepare for this school year, we recognized that in coming in last year, some things we couldn't do in terms of our instructional methods because of how the classrooms were set up. So this year, our children are transitioning back to small group instruction, center time, choice time, play time, community building time. There's things that we can do this year. We also know that our third graders, their last full school year was kindergarten. Our efforts in getting our children to become independent and confident learners really start with recognizing that we need to know where every child's content and skills are in academics, social, and emotional. Our operations are really driven by identifying the essential content we want right now. As we're coming out of the pandemic, we're still in it. Our teachers are making daily instructional shifts based on the identified content and what our children are demonstrating they know and understand. To your question about the data, our teachers are collecting qualitative and quantitative data to tell data stories about our individual children. We implement multiple measures of assessment, standard and local, so that we constantly tweak our instruction in reading and in math. Last year, our children didn't hold books. We know we need the support of the whole community in getting our children's reading skills up to where they can be so that when they go off to middle school, they are confident and they are independent and ready to embark on that second half of the journey. That is our job right now. We are looking to raise confident, responsible, resilient children. And the pandemic is just something that we have to recognize and push through to get our kids where we want them to be as they head off to middle school.
And I always hear Peggy talk about the role of that three-five education as getting kids ready for what they need in the middle school. You speak so passionately about that and have it very clear in your mind of helping these kids become independent, which is important for the middle school. And then as we go to the middle school for Kim and Angela, you have, in your purpose statement as well as the question that you asked, written in that you've asked for several years, is this balance between that social-emotional development but really getting into the academic rigor in middle school. And that has been an important question for you of balancing the rigor with the healthy mindset of students. So can you talk about how you feel, you've focused on that for several years now? Where have there been areas of progress in terms of- Where have there been areas of progress in terms of finding that balance? And what does that look like in the middle school? And maybe you can tie that a little bit to the shift, some new things you added to your schedule this year?
Sure, so this year, we began the revised schedule that included opportunities where we could support students' social emotional growth, which we know then supports them to be active learners, risk takers, healthy risk takers, and engage in rigor. So within the schedule, you'll see an X pod in the morning. I know we've spoken about this. I just want to remind where it's 15 minutes about at the start of the school day, that a student can arrive, be with a smaller group of peers, with a teacher, a faculty member, a trusted faculty member that can also give them guidance. So we're developing relationships with our students. We're helping them begin their day by planning and organizing what they need for the day or for the week. And we give them an opportunity to settle in and set goals for themselves, reflect on themselves, their learning and their needs, and move from there. Student directed learning is an opportunity that we built into seventh and eighth grade. And I think it's a dream of Angelo and mine that we always wanted kids to have an opportunity to do something that they were even a passion by, pursue a passion, have opportunities to stretch their academic prowess and rigor, to support them in those ways. And so SDL comes after lunch each day. I'm going to let Angelo talk a little bit about SDL.
So SDL is a 30 minute period for seventh and eighth graders, where as Peggy was mentioning, developing kids to be more independent learners, that's really the period where kids get to decide what they want to do based on their needs for the day, whether they want to go for extra help with a teacher, whether they want to expand their STEAM knowledge and do some drone flying with Mrs. Sellness, or just get into a good book, in a book club, in the library with Mrs. Parkland, if they can. So each morning in X pod, teachers have these activities and kids can choose which activities they want to do for the day. Or teachers can choose the activities for kids if teachers realize that the kid needs extra help or they need to finish some work or they're behind on stuff.
This has been an opportunity that we started small in terms of our structure of student directed learning. But our hope is that we've now implemented also on Wednesdays, an opportunity for kids, we called it the vibe. I don't know if that's really the best term, but it was the best one we could come up with. But it's to get a pulse on how we're doing in the middle school. And our sale members talk with other students about specific topics that are happening and what the kids need. And so our hope is that we're going to hear some things that they might need. They might need some, they might want some mindful time. And maybe we can bring a yoga instructor in or a faculty member who can then provide that during SDL. They might say that they're really interested in pursuing, we've talked about STEAM projects. All of that is going to be an opportunity to grow and address their needs as we hear them to be. So it's a little fluid, but there's also the necessary component of structure for our middle schoolers where there's a lot of choice. We want them to feel it and be empowered. But we also understand that there are times that we have to kind of bring them in and say, all right, here's the structure you need to, and the support you need in an academic area. So it's this balance that we're working through with the faculty and it's been successful so far. And just for X pod also, we're building programs as well. We have right now, thanks to the high school, like a junior mentor program, where we have our eighth, some eighth graders going into sixth grade classes. So we have two students, it sounds just like this is a high school mentorship, right? Going into each one, each sixth grade class, each sixth grade X pod, which is a smaller group of kids, has two eighth graders coming in and working with them or seventh graders working with them about learning what kindness day is. And so there's all these about cultural components of the middle school or just practical pieces or areas where they might get guidance from some of the eighth or seventh graders. So it's this opportunity that we're starting small, but planning on moving forward and addressing that social emotional need of our kids.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I'm just going to say what Lori just whispered to me. That's a great leadership opportunity. And something that I am so proud of in Byram Hills and that you see everywhere is that student leadership piece where we're having opportunities for students to be leaders and be peer leaders to younger children. And it teaches so much to them and they're so proud of that when they have that opportunity. So.
I'm curious, the SDL, student directed learning, what have been some of the things that have been used in the SDL program so far?
There's creative writing, there's.
There's kids are programming robots, they're flying drones. In tech, there's maker space activities.
I'm sorry, what did you say, interspace activities?
Inter space.
And that might be next. They have 3D printing where they're designing their own creating prints.
Elon Musk was coming tomorrow.
They're doing creative reading, they're doing book clubs, a whole host of activities.
Is SDL, I find this an interesting thing. Is this one direction for a class or are there multiple SDLs going on at the same time?
So there are about 14 offerings per grade, which can happen for 30 minutes. So students will sign up based on whatever their interests, wherever their interests lie.
And we have to give a shout out to Dr. Taylor and Krista Costelli because we didn't know how, we knew we wanted this for years, but we didn't know how you could do it. How could you do attendance? How could you, how could kids figure out where they're going? How could you manage all these organizational pieces? They found a platform through, called Flex Time Manager, that was, it seemed like it was made for us. And it's addressed all of our concerns that we know they're safe, we know kids are where they need to be, attendance can be taken, but they can choose every morning where they're going to go. Or a teacher can say, I'm sorry, I know you want to go to intramurals today, but unfortunately, I need to give you a little more support in math, so you're going to be coming to me in that classroom. And they can just pull them in on the program, put them in their class, and the kid gets, the student gets notification.
It seems like a program that the expansion possibilities are enormous, that program really.
It's our hope, we're starting small, wanted to make sure we could manage just organizationally, you know, 200 students and where they'll be. But then moving forward, it's really exciting to think about having kids tell us what's on their mind and then how we can find opportunities to support them. And it doesn't have to be year long, it can be a two week, a month long course offering. And we say course, but it's really activities where they can engage and their needs are met. And it speaks of challenge success.
Given the current environment, it seems like such a mental health plus for students.
Yeah, I think it was important for Kim and Angelo to find that balance at the middle school between, you know, you want to keep these middle school kids contained and controlled because they can easily go off to right over to middle school. But allowing enough academic and decision-making freedom to let them learn and teach them some lessons to be able to learn how to regulate and manage themselves. That's a big part of middle school is teaching kids how to, developing those executive function skills and managing time, managing their academics, their, you know, their, what do you call your notebooks? Your academic planners or whether it's electronics now. So that's all really part of the middle school. And I think SDL concept is helping kids make some of those decisions about what they want to work on. It's a really innovative approach that I think feedback is good so far with kids from what they're hearing.
Really positive.
It's a gift. If you told any of us in this room that we could spend 15 minutes in the morning getting ourselves organized about what we want to do for that one half hour that gets blocked out for us every afternoon, what, how amazing would that be, right? And it's something that we as adults should aspire to have more reflection and practice about.
It's actually, you're reminding me of an executive article I read about executives who talk about having a morning routine. And it doesn't matter what the routine is, as long as you have a routine leads to success later in the day. It could be that you get up and check your emails for 15 minutes in the morning, or it could be just you go out for a run or you meditate. But having some routine that you do consistently, and I think X pod allows for that opportunity. Give kids a routine in the morning to just get oriented for the day. So it's such a benefit, I think, to the middle school, adolescent mind. Great. And let's segue to the high school. Thanks, Kim, for that and Angelo. At the high school, Chris, I'm reading your purpose statement is, what strikes me in there is this notion of students feeling belonging and ownership. You mentioned the deadlock. So curious if you could talk about that piece, belonging? What's the purpose for that? Why is that important in high school? And that ownership piece?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. And we knew when we were putting it in there that that would be a pretty powerful statement. And I think if we all look back on our own high school experiences or those people who felt like they had a positive experience in high school, there was something that connected them. There was some way that they felt ownership in what they were doing. And if we look at sort of the pyramid of needs, we know that no kids are going to be able to reach their potential unless, number one, they feel safe. Number two, they feel respected and dignified. They're not going to be able to get up to those upper levels of learning unless they have them. And belonging for us was something that we wanted to make sure we were addressing. Coming back off of, you know, 18 months of not always being able to have our eyes on the kids and not always knowing what their experience was. So coming in this year, we wanted to make sure that we did everything we could to identify all of those students and find ways for them to connect and feel a sense of belonging in the school.
That's great. And then so you have now, you also are implementing a new schedule this year. You started that a couple of years ago doing the research on that. How does this, how does a schedule serve that piece, the belonging piece, other aspects of social emotional learning and growth, but also the academics? If you could sort of address both of those in the new schedule? And by the way, to remind the board, Chris and Kim will come to the December meeting. They'll talk a little bit more in depth about the schedules. But certainly we could talk about it. Don't want to avoid it now, but let Chris talk a little about that piece.
Yeah, we were very excited this year to implement our new master schedule. And thank you to all of the members of the board who were in every step of the process, either doing empathy interviews or on steering committees with us. So we were really happy to implement it. And the schedule this year, we do feel is a better reflection of our values as a learning community. That goes in the academic realm, in the social emotional areas, as well as in connection to the community. And I'm going to invite Kristen and Colleen to speak on some of those things. We know that the master schedule is still a work in progress. We know that it's getting up and running. But we can already feel some of those positive impacts across the building. We feel a calmness, we feel kids having joy in the building. Not to say they didn't have joy before, but we see it on a deeper level. We see deeper conversations in the classroom. And we see just a, I would say, a healthier learning environment with our new schedule. And that can be addressed with the office hours, the community lunch, or the longer class periods. So the community building aspect was really important for us this year as we went into it. And Colleen has been really working with the students and the faculty to make sure that we are doing everything we can to reconnect all of our kids to that Bobcat pride and that school spirit that might have drifted away a little bit over the past 18 months.
So one of the things we're really excited about with building community is focusing on our extracurriculars this year. We're very excited they're back in person. Last year, the extracurriculars met over Zoom. So students are just happy to be meeting together with their clubs and activities. We also had a universal club there where we invited the entire school to come in and kind of re-familiarize themselves with all the clubs and rejoin different clubs they might be interested in, even as a senior, rejoining a new club. We also, as Chris mentioned, have shifted to a community lunch, which shifted our lunch from 26 minutes to 43 minutes. And that's a huge shift in the time students have both to talk to each other, to get outside. We see students playing intramurals downstairs, using the weight rooms, and some students actually getting started on some of their work as well. And then some of you I know attended some of the homecoming events last week. We had a great spirit week. We had a pep rally outside that was truly lovely. And I think a new tradition for the school to be outside. And are really just looking for ways to kind of infuse that community spirit into our student body.
Yeah, and we also know that our students are coming back with a wide range of experiences. We know that we have had students who have felt very isolated. We have had some students who have thrived and everywhere in between. And Kristen and Christina Wilson have been working very closely to make sure that we are supporting our students' social emotional wellness as they come back to us. So I know Kristen wanted to speak a little bit about those supports.
Definitely. So one of the things we're really striving for this year is for students to feel as though they're connected to the school and have supports. So if anyone is looking for support in any way, self identifying, people that they can go to, whether it's their guidance counselor or school social worker, Ms. Kelly, and/or Bernice Pagan, who is the student assistance counselor. And we're noticing that, you know, that is something that they're able to do routinely or even refer their friends if that's something that is needed. And now we have the structures in place during community lunch where kids can see their guidance counselor, and Christina will talk about that more, during a time when they're not missing any academic classes.
Yeah, Christina, I think Kristen just called on you. And I know in conversations with.
You know, kind of a silver lining, definitely with this schedule, is that we feel like the, what the district stands as important in helping students be socially and emotionally well is the capability for that is now in the schedule. So we don't have to pull students necessarily out of class or ask them to come in super early in the morning or meet with us after school. We have this nice long lunch that students can come see us. And believe me, they are, they're in our offices during that lunch period, which is great. We have office hours, of course, we have after school. And for those one times necessitate, of course, we pull students out of class if needed. So there's so much alignment with the well-being of students and the ability to say that we have the time for that in our schedule.
At the high school, have you found that the new schedule has brought a new calm since there aren't the, you don't have the same classes every day? So potentially you don't, you can't get tested the next day because you don't have that class. Has that brought a new sense of calm for the students and for the faculty?
Yeah, and the students that we've been speaking to, they really like the ability to plan their work and not feel like they're going to be overwhelmed every night. And if we look back to our old schedule, they were at least seeing seven or eight of their classes the next day. On this, it's really only five. So there is a calmness and the transitions have been reduced in the building. If you remember back to our old schedule, we had a half hour of transitions throughout the day. And in this schedule, it's almost down to 12 minutes. So we've been able to maximize that instructional time and calm the building at the same time.
Chris, thanks. I know that it was actually an effort to get this master schedule off the ground and so much time and effort went into researching it. And I know you said it's evolving and we're looking at, I'm just wondering, I know we're going to meet in depth a little later on in the year. What surveys are you going to implement and data collection efforts as to see, you know, how it's going and what you'd like to tweak, if anything?
Yeah, great question. And we are going to be working on that with the student advisory committee. And then we're also going to be continuing our partnership with Challenge Success. So we would like to make sure that the survey that we gave last year, we want to have clear eyes on whether their responses were based on their experience in COVID or their experience with the new schedule. So we are going to look at it from the student standpoint with the student advisory committee. The faculty will be getting polled during faculty meetings. And we're going to continue to do work there as well. Fortunate to have a lot of great parents come to principals coffees. So we're always going to be soliciting feedback from there. And I always welcome any input into that.
Yeah, so my question was similar to Laura's. I guess it's for Chris or even Christina. And obviously, it sounds like there's a lot of pros with the master schedule. And this question might be premature, better suited for the December meeting. But because of the odd 18 month period we've had, has there been any noticeable observations or feedback that there's been any burnout or difficulties from the students because of the longer class periods? Or is it kind of too early to tell considering we're only, you know, in October?
Yeah, that's a good question. And we're continuing to work on getting better at that as a faculty. So the idea that students would be sitting and being lectured to for 64 minutes, you know, even as an adult, that makes you start to sweat. So we're trying to work to make sure that our teachers. So we're trying to work to make sure that our teachers have all the tools in their arsenal so that they can implement lessons where that doesn't happen. So yes, we are getting better at it. And, you know, the time may be later in the year to answer that question more fully.
I guess the question I wanted to ask was, this is a significant change. And it was a change brought about really by the pandemic. I don't know if this would have happened in the absence of the pandemic. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we have found the perfect solution either. So my question is, what is your plan to monitor this and to tweak it as necessary as we go along?
Great question, Irene. And we're always going to be looking at those metrics that we've always looked at. So our region scores, our AP scores, our SAT, ACT scores. We're going to be looking at the qualitative data from our teachers in how well they are implementing project-based learning. We're going to be looking at the types of colleges that our students may still be getting into or may start applying to, to see if there are changes there. Christina has data on all of that. And we'll see how our acceptance is, you know, how they change, if they change.
What do you think is a fair time period for this? We're talking about, the year seems short. Are we thinking about two to three years, more or less? What's in your mind on that?
Yeah, so I think in order to really have a good understanding, we have to be realistic about what just happened over the last 18 months. So some of the student behaviors that we're going to be seeing academically will be responsible, will be, you know, connected to that. So in my mind, I would say we need a good three years before we can really say with certainty that this is working the way we feel it should have been working.
And you'll come back to us at least every year and let us know where we stand on that? Maybe more frequently?
Absolutely.
Well, I know December, but this is a true change in the high school experience that we're, that we're giving to the students. It really is.
Absolutely right.
So Chris, just going back to the first, one of the first points here about extracurriculars, and extracurriculars being a real key to a sense of belonging and trying to increase participation. And I think it's great to see it on the page and it definitely resonates with me. And I guess my question would be a couple-fold. With COVID last year, just inevitably, a lot of extracurriculars were disrupted because there was just no way to do it the same way that you could do it when you're all in person. Do you think at this point, like, participation, is it your sense that it's back to maybe where it was before the pandemic? Or is there a little bit of a lag and still ways to go? And then when you look at just the overall extracurricular program at Byron Hills, like, high school, I mean, do you think that there are ways to invest and enhance? Or do you feel really good about where it is? And it's just a question of getting students to take advantage of the opportunities that are there?
Yeah, those are great questions. And I know we have students that are making beeline to Colleen's office all the time. So the thing to remember is that our current seniors, they are the only group in the high school that actually had an uninterrupted year here. So for us, it was trying to make sure that everybody understood, even our juniors and sophomores, what we had to offer. And I'll let, I'll let Colleen take it over from there.
Yeah, so that's a great question. I think if anything, a lot of clubs are finding that they have way more students who signed up for their clubs and are now in the process of kind of weeding through those clubs and figuring out which one am I really going to commit to. So we have a lot of clubs scheduling meetings, a lot of students going to a lot of meetings. And I think probably in a month or two, students will kind of settle into where their clubs are. One of the things that we're trying to really increase this year is our communication with club leaders. So I have weekly office hours that we have club leaders come to all the time, making suggestions, asking questions, can we do this, should we do this? And we're also trying to hold regular meetings of all of the club leaders together, which I think would be something that would really strengthen the clubs and help their own leadership grow, is to hear from each other. How are you improving your club? How are you increasing attendance? So I actually think right now our attendance is higher than pre-COVID. I think the students are very excited about the clubs. And I think it'll probably level off once they figure out exactly where they want to be.
What about with the extra curriculars with sports? Have you seen an uptick since Rob's our assistant in sports? Since obviously the clubs have seen a great uptick.
Our, our numbers for after-school athletics have remained consistent, which is, which is always a good thing to see that. So we've been able to field our teams and all of the teams that we expected to field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the high school, thanks for those questions and for diving deep. And let's sort of continue along that line. And maybe I'll sort of ask a general question for any of the academic chairs or the directors, speak about the schedule and the impact of the schedule. You were talking about that a little bit in terms of the longer periods. Maybe someone can talk about how that time's being utilized differently and how that benefits students? And then we can also talk about what challenges there are that you're thinking about with your teachers. I'm not sure if anyone wants to take that off.
Well, I want to hear from them, but also from the signs, how advanced the labs is. A lot of times you'll have sun and then it'll...
We'll do that. Melissa, read your pants, and then we'll come to math. Melissa, yeah.
I can go, I can talk about it. So we had training last spring with IDE Core about using the extended period of time. And they came in and they talked to our department about the beginning, middle, and end concept of a lesson. And our department's been able to really embrace that because we have to do reading, writing, speaking, and listening and throw in culture on top of that during one class period. So utilizing what we learned with beginning, middle, and end, thanks to Dr. Taylor about introducing us to IDE Core, and all of these skills, along with our presentational, interpretive, and our interpersonal modes, we've got eight balls in the air at all the time, and now we've got extra time to do that. So between those skills and those modes, it's a nice transition for the kids so they're not sitting still doing the same thing all the time. So from that take, from that standpoint as a teacher, it's nice because there's variety during the period. I think the kids feel the variety. Now that we're back in person, there's partner work because they can turn and talk to a partner. They can work in groups with those different skills and modes. So we're really enjoying it in the language classroom.
So Melissa's referencing a four-week professional development course we offered on how to use long blocks of time through a consultant we've been hiring for years that has worked at the district. That's what she was referring to. And they talk about instructional model for breaking the class up into these chunks and then how to develop structures around that. And Lisa, I know, had, I think, five teachers participated in that four-week course. About half your department participated as well. But can you speak to that question of the use of the long blocks of time?
Sure, I mean, I'm not one to brag, but since you brought it up, Tim, it was, it was about half of my department. You're number one.
You're not one to brag?
Did she say we're number one?
So for, you know, for math, we've been doing a lot of work over the past couple of years in Rich Tasks. And so this extra time has really afforded us a lot of different opportunities. So for example, the geometry teachers, about maybe last week, were discussing how this extra time has really benefited their work with students and bringing them through the whole discourse of crafting a proof, which for anybody that's been a lawyer knows how that can manifest, not just in math, but in other disciplines as well. Last week, I was in an AP Calculus class that was doing a Socratic discussion around Galileo's recantation, which if you're not a math or science geek like myself, Galileo was that gentleman that was excommunicated from the church for his wild and crazy theory that the sun was the center of the solar system and not the earth. And so the students were using his recantation as the basis of their Socratic discussion. And it was just so interesting because not only were the students games with question before about burnout, it was the opposite. They were thriving. They couldn't, I mean, they were staying after, they were coming back. And what was so great was there was one point that a student said, well, there's, you know, there's, there's like facts and then there's objective facts. And then the teacher said, well, what do you mean by objective facts? And she said, well, as a math teacher, you can't just come in here and say to us, the shortest distance between two points is not a straight line. Like, that would not be good teaching. And at that point, I kind of smiled to myself. And he said, we're going to come back to that, right? And he allowed more discourse to occur, right? And the longer period allowed for this. And then he came back to her comment. The thing about the shortest distance between two points is it is a straight line, except when it's not. And on a curved surface, it's not. And the fact that that class period was the length that it was, right, allowed not only her point to come back into the discussion at the end, but to allow the entire class, right, to kind of think about that and hold on to it until it was ripe for discussion. And it was cool, it was cool.
So a point of longer classes is to go deeper in content, which is probably why colleges and universities have long blocks of time and meet less often. So you can go deeper into typical content, which, you know, Lisa's explaining in that. And that was a purpose of ours. And I think with math teachers, and I've worked in schools that had block schedules, I think math teachers were always the most fearful of it, just wanting more of that day-to-day time with it. And it's having to reconceptualize how you're approaching mathematics and just thinking about it differently. For years, we've had a shift in our math pedagogy and approach to begin with. So I don't think it was that big of a shift for a lot of your teachers. And then you wanted to hear from Deb about science.
I'm just more concerned about the law, the length of the lab with the class. And what happens, like, if all of a sudden you have a science lunch and then lab? Is that, like, does that break up the continuity? Like, that's my biggest concern, is that huge chunk for science. Because that's a very long.
Deb and Chris, can you speak to this a bit?
I can speak to the fact that, oh, sorry. Longer time with the students when it comes to science, when we're doing inquiry and discovery. I think a lot of it, we're finding, is depending upon the, you know, the types of classes that the students are involved with. So I know that in some cases, the AP teachers and the students that, you know, can focus on labs and engaging activities for a longer period of time, find it refreshing. Now, when it comes to those unique situations where there is a lunch in between, I mean, our teachers are used to thinking on their toes and being flexible and figuring it out. And I think that's one of the things on the list of, you know, how can we look and see whether that's something that we need to adjust to? But by and large, that's usually a unique experience. It doesn't happen often. But when it comes to the students, like, maybe in the ninth grade or students in the ICT classes, we're finding that the longer blocks are still valuable. It's just that we have to plan differently. And the planning that we're working with IDE Core, I spoke to Mary Ann today about it, is a lot of our teachers started using IDE Core like six, seven years ago. And we focused on problem-based learning. And within problem-based learning, they, it works nicely for us because now with the new standards, instead of it being a problem, IDE used to talk about finding a problem that was Google-able, or not Google-able, I could say. Now, actually, with the new science standards, we don't need to find a problem that is not Google-able. We actually look at something called a phenomenon. And then we build all of the learning around that phenomenon. So it gets no more rote knowledge and just, you know, regurgitation of facts. Not that we did that anyway, because we've always had really engaging science classes. But now it's students driving their own learning, trying to figure out through inquiry and discovery and what are the science and engineering practices of how do we think and act like a scientist? So as you heard, you know, Ms. Haldren is trying to steal our thunder and, you know, use math in science.
This is number one.
Science is really just an approach and a way of learning by using a specific set of skills, by first posing a question and then trying to do different research and learn about it before you draw a conclusion. So to answer your question, what we're doing is we're looking at different classes to see if at some point, maybe breaking the double periods apart would be more beneficial for some classes and maybe not others. So that's on our list of continuous improvement as trustee children is talking to Mr. Walsh now.
Why not throw one more puzzle piece into the schedule then, right, Chris?
Yeah, well, we thought about that going in. And we wanted to make sure that we respected what Deb and the teachers wanted. And going into it, they really wanted to remain having those periods coupled together. So it is an ongoing discussion. And like Deb said, some of the older students and some of those content areas, they let themselves to stay coupled. And maybe some of the younger students uncoupling those labs might be the best way to do it.
Thank you. Thanks for that response. And yeah, Mia.
I have a question more on the, I guess it's more on the social emotional side again. One of the things, when we used to take our tours, when we were able to go into the schools and do our tours, one of the things I loved so much about the high school was that you would go into a classroom and there would be kids kind of all over the place. Some would be sitting on the radiator, some would be rolling on the floor. And it sort of allowed for different ways of learning and, you know, kids who have the wiggles to work that into their class structure. So I'm wondering, in the age of COVID, where you can't really do a lot of those things, coupled with this extended class time, and I, my own kids were ants in a pants. How are they, how are these kids sitting still for so long? And how's that being factored in?
I'll let Lisa answer that from her place.
My shortest answer is they're not just sitting still. It's just that the nature of their movement has changed, right? So maybe it was a bunch of students all over. And now they might be moving more of a pod formation around, right? So we'll kind of group them into mini pods. And we know for, let's say, the first quarter or first half of the quarter, they're going to be with that pod. And they're going to move around the room in that pod. So they're still moving. Because I absolutely agree. And I have a son that has ants in his pants 24/7. So I definitely think that children of all ages need that. So the movement is there, it's just been modified for children.
And I do, I do get to see outside of my office so many kids and their teachers walking by. So they're taking movement breaks at a large rate. So I do see that quite a bit this year.
And also going outside for projects as well, either just to kind of sit outside and do math out there. We've kind of commandeered that space right out in the hall, outside of our areas, as the math space. But, you know, there's folks out there as well from other disciplines.
I'm just dovetailing off of what Mia has asked, and maybe Jill can speak to it a little bit. Or, I mean, Lisa, you talked about, you know, AP Calculus class. So, you know, kids are stimulated, they're taking that class, perhaps they could sit longer. But about the child that has ADHD, has, you know, the special accommodation, how are they pairing with the longer periods? If someone can speak to that. And what accommodation is being made for them?
Yeah, and I'll let Kim address that. But, you know, the, the research did not say that 49 minutes was the optimal time to, you know, for those kids either. What we're trying to do is just change the way that those lessons are being done so that they don't have to think about it as sitting there for 64 minutes. And I think that's really the, the approach that all of our teachers have been taking is to get that to seem different so that it's not sitting, you know, and doing something.
I'd argue even the younger grades, like ninth and 10th, probably have more either movement or switching. Because I think the teachers recognize they, they don't have that same talent to sit there. And so they'll build in, and it might be, you know, a quick mini activity on this. And then they switch, and then they're doing an ear pod. Or they have a lot of times options, like 10 or 15 minutes in the middle of the period. If you want to go see Ms. O'Connell up in that corner of the room, she'll deliver any lesson for you. If not, you can work on your own. So just being flexible with the work and having varied levels of work, which we've been, you know, working on in the math department for a while now, has been a tremendous asset for us.
If I could say also add that one of the silver linings in the pandemic was the immersion into learning different types of technology that maybe wouldn't have happened as fast as it did because it was just forced. It was really a good thing because now I think a lot of teachers are grateful for that because it gives them different opportunities to choose from as they design transitions in their lessons. So, you know, we try to say, try to make sure, and that you're cognizant, that there's some sort of transition every 20 minutes. And I think it's the use of technology that they had prior to, I mean, you know, just over the past year and a half, has given them this repertoire that they might not have had before.
Dwayne?
As I say, one of the benefits, I think, that came out of the pandemic is that we had different approaches. I know that the English department spent a lot of time last year thinking about the 5E model. That was something that really was an intentional design of lessons. That was something that really was an intentional design of lessons where students had movements throughout. So going back to Mia's question, there are different activities that they were doing. And there was choice in it as well. So that the students could even go through the lesson at a different pace or even in a different order, which meant that you had students working at various different places. You could walk into an English classroom and have three students working on peer editing of paper, two students doing some independent reading in preparation for what they were going to be discussing in the Socratic seminar. Lisa's not the only one who's doing those. But I can't wrong what we're gonna be bringing math quizzes back into the English classroom just yet.
Just so aware of social-emotional learning, you know, I feel like I'm getting picked off.
But it's, you know, it really was something that I think was an unintended consequence of the pandemic style of teaching. And the teachers now are much more readily infusing some of those things into their lessons, which I'm very happy to see. And I hope it continues.
Ira?
On page 26. This is an administrative bulletin.
It's a Socratic seminar.
I know, I'm literally thinking that.
Melissa? I was gonna ask.
Happy to keep that.
Far be it from me to let this evening pass without asking a question of my friend, the honorable Melissa Stahl. And my question really is, the, the teaching of world languages, has there been any substantive change, either in because of the change in schedule or because of the pandemic? Has that caused anybody to rethink the way world languages are being handled by the, by the high school? And a collateral question to that, only because, I, I don't want to bring personal matters into it, but I will say my grandson, whose father you happen to know, started taking Spanish in kindergarten, and is being taught pretty much solely in Spanish. And I'm just curious whether that type of program is something that you could see a public school district being, you know, entertaining. I found it fascinating they were doing that. I just wanted to put that question to you, together with whether or not you saw the pandemic and/or the change in schedule affect the way world languages are taught.
So two-part question. Let's start with the first part.
Yes, by all means.
Really exciting news. Finally, since 1996, the state just adopted new state standards. Since 1996, they haven't been changed. So we have to implement stage one by 2023. We're already ahead of the game because we were following the American Council on foreign, on teaching foreign languages standards, which were the national standards. And New York State adopted those standards. So we were ahead of the game five years ago when we started doing our interpretive modes and our skills and all of that. So now we have until 2023 to implement the new state standards. And they're talking about bringing back the Regents exam for our checkpoint C and checkpoint B, which is exciting news for us. And what that means for what the language classroom looks like as opposed to when Eric took, you know, Spanish with me way back when, is that that focus is no longer on just vocabulary memorization and grammatical drills. It's more of a synthesis of that. And how do you synthesize that vocabulary and that grammar into a proficient spoken response or a written response? So that's how it's changed and how we are going to continue to change. We just changed in the middle school, our sixth-grade exploratory to become a 90% immersion, immersion experience for those guys down there. We reintroduced the linguistics program down there. So kids take linguistics and Spanish, and then they take French and Italian with a different product for each one of those rotations. That's all an immersive experience. So we're starting already in sixth grade and leading in. We will be working with a consultant this year to guide our curriculum rebuild. And it's, it'll take us some time to redo this to address all of those new state standards. It's actually really exciting, and I can't wait to see it come to fruition in, you know, when we get there.
Are you trying to hide all this from us?
I'm sorry?
Trying to hide all this from us?
Well, whoever asks. Anyhow, the second part is your question, which I've never heard before, is when are we introducing language at the elementary? And we did do that study in 2009. And one of the things that I'm really curious about is, you know, when I talk to Kim Lappel, whose son is in a bilingual program over in Fox Lane, and she always reminds me that she's doing that as it's managed with her second grader, why aren't we doing that at Byram Hills? And we, to have a bilingual program, you have to have 50%, more than 50% of that student population speaking one language. And then you can introduce the English speakers. We don't have that population yet. The other thing, talking to Peggy and talking to Coleman Hill, is that there's not that much time in the clock, in the day to introduce a different language. One of the things that I'm excited about this year is that I'm looking to pilot, looking to pilot, using online programs to introduce Chinese, American Sign Language, and Latin. So I'm reaching out to some interesting kids who, who have that intrinsic motivation to learn a language, and there were a couple in the high school, to see if they're interested in piloting this program. There's a middle school family that's been in contact with me a lot about possibly piloting it as well. So it's on the horizon. We are closer than ever to this one, I'll tell you.
Melissa, I'm speechless.
You didn't get a master's certificate.
I know.
It's, it's, I'm actually really, it's an exciting time.
Thank you. That's a great answer. It's always nice to hear.
Have we piloted some, didn't we pilote a, I thought we were thinking about Mandarin or something?
We did that over the summer of, with the pandemic. In that spring of the first pandemic, we did a Mandarin course for elementary students.
Many years ago, we had.
It went well. It went well.
Many years ago, we had a cooperative learning, I think it was with Fox Lane for Chinese.
Katona. It was with Katona in Japanese. Who has a distance learning lab.
Katona, Japanese, Fox Lane, Chinese.
Yeah.
But I remember that didn't work out well.
It was a challenge with technology. It was a challenge with scheduling. It was a challenge for a period of.
No, no, it's no blanking this, Rod. It was difficult. It was difficult. But thank you. That's great news to hear. I'm really, I'm very curious to see how that's going to go. The last part you spoke about, that really is fascinating.
Yeah, we'll see what the interest level is.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Ira just invited you back, one.
I think I heard that too, yes.
Yeah, we'll be hearing from you again then, Ms. Stahl.
I cannot wait.
Yes.
I do want to bring closure to this, but I want to bring in just a couple of quick points. Our Fine Arts Director, Pete Pollack, I want to just have him speak for a moment since Fine Arts was really hit hard during the pandemic, where it just pretty much stopped doing Fine Arts as being done. At least the other subjects, they could figure out how to make that work. So I just want to have Pete speak a little bit to how things are different today and are our kids singing and playing instruments?
Sure, yes. The good news is that I say that we're back, and that's the, that's the good news. Kids are making music, they are making art. Students are working with clay again. Students are in their classrooms. Teachers are in their arts classrooms again. It's exciting. We are still following all CDC guidelines in terms of how that instruction looks. But kids are able to make music as a core discipline. They're able to make music together. When we think about our performances, last year, our performances were really put together by students submitting videos they made at home by themselves in their living rooms, right? This year, we're actually able to put performances together that will be videotaped as the students are making music together in the same room, which is really what all of this is about, in that collaboration. So while we're still not sure what audiences will look like, we know that they'll be able to actually make music and make art together as a team. And so there's a lot of joy happening right now in the music and arts classroom. So we're thankful for that. And that's our, I guess, our latest update.
Pete, I have to say, one of the highlights for me of the year was watching you and five other music teachers with the kids in the band at our homecoming celebration. And that was awesome.
It was so, thanks, Deb. It was, we have all the teachers, they just want to come and play instruments alongside kids off our homecoming. And it was just awesome, you know.
Just kudos to your department and you. That was amazing.
Pete loves to play. Yeah, so thank you for that, Pete. And two more quick things. Speaking of technology and the pandemic, you know, we, pre-pandemic, there was concern about screen time. And now that we're getting back, you know, sort of emerging out of the pandemic, just thinking about that balance, still doing some things electronically, but also being mindful, kids need to interact. We got to get them interacting with each other. But I always liked Andrew's sort of conceptual image of this discussion around screen time. So Andrew, if you could just talk to us about how, to sort of conceptualize it a little bit differently when we talk about it.
So at Byram Hills, we've always, we've always promoted to help you balance some online and offline activities with students. So on-screen and off-screen. During the pandemic, that definitely shifted to more on-screen. But we've always also had a mindset that not all screen time is equal. There's different types of screen time. There's your collaborative screen time, your, your, your content, where you're actually absorbing content screen time. There's your interactive screen time. There's your content creation time, where you're actually building something online. And we can't sort of lump them all into the same bucket and say that all screen time is equal. So what we do here is we really try to focus on eliminating the, what we know is really negative screen time. So we have systems and we have technology to eliminate social networking screen time. We know that there's a negative impact for that. So we eliminate that to the best we can possibly do so students don't have to engage in that. Then there's things like consumption. We try to limit that time, that time. We don't want kids just consuming content all day long on the screen. We want to actually have them do more of the other side, which is the content creation and building things and collaborating and communicating through the software and the technology. And we focus our time on there. So we really not only balance how much they're on, on the screen, but also the type of work they're doing.
So another way to just, you know, not quantify it all together and just talk for minutes, but looking at the different types of use of screen time. And then let's bring Jen Layton as our closer. So we don't want to say. Why don't you talk about an important piece I know you've worked on? You know, you talk a lot about teaching kids historical thinking skills and having discussion in the social studies classroom and worked on what you call civil discourse. And now I see in your goals, you're bringing in what's called the Better Arguments Project. And that's in a partnership with Dwayne and the English department. Can you talk about what that Better Arguments Project is?
Yeah, so to echo Scott's earlier points about why the board function really, board functions really well is because of the ability to have civil discourse. If we think about the most important thing that we could teach our students to improve, I think, the health of our nation would be, can they speak to each other in a respectful way while having different points of view? And so Dwayne and I have partnered together with an organization that we discovered called the Better Arguments Project. And really, their goal is to create adults and students who can, what they'll say, have a better argument. And what they mean by that is really talking to another person with the goal of understanding, not winning. And so there's some common language that we're now sharing, grade six to 12, in all English and social studies classes, about what does that look like? We did an introductory PD on the August Superintendent Conference Day. We're going to have a consultant come in in November and really help the teachers with very specific strategies on how do you run a classroom, for example, where you take winning off the table? How do you run a discussion where everyone has room, makes room to transform? And so the teachers are really motivated by this because they feel that although it won't be easy and you'll have to take small measurable steps, if our, if our students could improve those skills, we feel like that's something where we're improving society at whole. So really excited about that.
So giving some skills, a skill set to students about how to engage in discussion, which is really positive. And just that simple statement, listen to understand. We've taught that to our student leadership board in the past, and they love learning about that. And they love learning about, you know, trying to listen to understand and doing exercises. I think it's something that makes sense to our kids who are trying to figure the world out. So thank you. Unless the board has any other questions, I know it's been a long time.
If I could give all of you a gift, it would be a Murphy bed in your office. And I'll be back in no time.
I was watching sleep.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We need a little bit of, thank you. So thank you. It's a lot in all of us.
Something you scratched?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
21, 22, is this 23? No, it's next, for next. Oh, for 22, 23? Yep. Next one. It's for 21, 22, for the 22, 23 budget.
Yeah.
So turn it over to Kelly.
Yeah, just some information that we approve every year. We reviewed this with the Finance Advisory Committee prior to the meeting. It's basically our budget calendar, which is our set dates for our presentations and anything that's due to the state, our notices. And the guidelines we have in the budget process, as well as the Finance Advisory Committee charge. So that's what we, we're up for approval tonight. And any comment from the Finance Advisory on that? I think we were pretty good in terms of.
Yeah, everything was really good and very consistent with what we've done the last couple of years, which has worked well, and the Finance Advisory Committee has worked well. So I think we can, I guess, take a motion to adopt the budget insurance.
Don't move.
Okay, all in favor? All right. So why don't we go on to 11.3? Thanks, Kelly. This is about the New York State School Board Association annual meeting coming up, where there's a business meeting where every district gets a vote on resolutions, which are basically things that the School Board Association will focus on from an advocacy perspective. In the packet, there was a, a list of them. And it, it basically gave a consensus from West Putt of what schools in the area think about all of these resolutions. And, and so really, the purpose tonight, and if anybody has any questions on this, we can either talk about it now, or they could always call me because the meeting isn't until, I guess, the 18th, I want to say. I hope I'm right about that. I think it's the 18th that is actually going to be the date at which the meeting occurs. But I just wanted to see if I can get authorization on behalf of the district to cast our votes. The one, there's one that I want to point out, which I think is important to point out, which I personally disagree with, but want to make sure there's consensus on this. So one of the resolutions that even in the West Putt community they supported was NISBA supports proposals that would generate new state revenues with the dedicated purpose of funding education. The way that reads to me is that they'll advocate for new taxes that specifically go towards education. And I think that, you know, sitting here from a Byram Hills perspective, I'm not sure that's something that I would want to feel comfortable supporting because I feel like we're, you know, our, our community's taxed in a, in a very significant way. We don't receive a tremendous amount of state aid. And to advocate for new taxes for our community where the money is likely probably not coming back to our community, you know, may not be in the best interest of our community. So that's one that I felt like maybe we should go the opposite way. And there was a very divided discussion at the West Putt meeting, depending on people's perspectives. So it was not, but overwhelmed, but by, by a slight margin, the consensus was to support it. So that one, I was, I was thinking we would oppose. Most of the others would be in lockstep. There are a few others where we may not be. But that was the one that was most notable that I wanted to mention. So with that as an overview, just, yeah, see if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, maybe, I guess it's a vote, just to give me the authorization to, to vote at the NISBA resolutions meeting.
I will tell I vote on behalf of this one.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So that's that. Now we go to the beds report, the enrollment report.
Yes. So our beds data is in, and as of October 12th, we have 2,319 students in the district. So we had increased sections in kindergarten, second grade. We had added two sections of kindergarten and a section of seventh grade. So I don't know if you remember this, but we had that very small group that went through the middle school at one point, 158. They are now in 11th grade. And if you look at the difference between that one small group and even some of the numbers that are like 155 to 165, which are in like third, fourth, fifth grade, but our numbers in kindergarten are 179, first grade 182, second grade 184. And then third grade, it drops down to 155. So we're definitely saw what we thought we were going to see over time, which was a spike in some of those lower elementary student numbers. So that bodes well for us with systems and programming. We can accommodate these numbers of kids. I'm happy to see that because we were hoping that that was going to take place. We obviously had a big surge in the market here and a lot of people moving into the district. As I said, the BHEF hosted a kindergarten and first grade parent night, which was attended by hundreds of people outside. So, yeah, so a lot of people purposely coming to this community to raise their children, expressing that to me. And I love seeing those numbers rise. So.
Right.
It is. And that is it for beds.
All right. So now we go to, ooh, 11.5. So now we go to, ooh, eleven point five, this is very positive.
Yes, I'd like to speak about this. I had the great pleasure of speaking with Danina and Stephen Fisher. They have children in the district, and they came to me because they wanted to present $25,000 in scholarship monies in honor of their son, Michael Tyler Fisher. For the next 25 years, they are asking that we award a graduating senior the scholarship in an amount of $1,000. So a $1,000 scholarship every year for the next 25 years. And the selection is up to the discretion of the school district, but they're hoping that the student demonstrates care for others in the community as their son had exemplified. So what a beautiful gift to the school district and promise for our graduating seniors that they exemplify the characteristics of Michael Fisher, and we'll be able to utilize those funds to continue the work that they're doing in front of others. This is just, it's just absolutely outstanding and touching and a commitment to our school community and our children. So I just thank the Fishers on behalf of the Board of Education and all the 25 future recipients of this scholarship. How absolutely incredible and generous to be so caring for kids to come, right?
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Very special. So why don't we go to eleven point six?
Just need a motion to accept that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Yep, so with gratitude, can I get a motion to accept eleven point five donation to establish the Michael Tyler Fisher Scholarship?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. So the last item under new business is just about the SALT deduction. So as we all know, a number of years ago, with the latest tax legislation in Washington in 2017, residents of our community and around the country lost the ability to deduct state and local taxes, which, given property taxes are local taxes and school taxes are local taxes, this certainly impacted our families. And so right now, given all the discussion in Washington, thought it might be a good time to consider this resolution, and then if passed, send it off to our federal delegation as they have these debates around taxes. So I'll read it really quickly, and then if anyone has any questions. Whereas the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017 placed a $10,000 cap on the state and local tax SALT deduction, and whereas the federal SALT deduction was previously claimed by 44 million Americans in all 50 states, including over 488,000 households in Westchester and Putnam Counties in New York State, and whereas middle-income Americans are the vast majority of the beneficiaries of the SALT deduction, as 82% of Putnam taxpayers, 70% of Westchester taxpayers who claim the SALT deduction prior to enactment of the cap had adjusted gross income under $200,000, and whereas the SALT deduction was widely used to avoid double taxation prior to the institution of the cap, with approximately 2/3 of Putnam and Westchester County households filing for the deduction in 2017, and whereas even a doubling of the current $10,000 SALT deduction would be insufficient to make our taxpayers whole, as the average 2017 SALT deduction for Westchester taxpayers was over $36,000, and whereas property taxes fund most P-12 public school spending in Putnam and Westchester Counties, the median district in our two counties is currently funding 83.5% of school costs through property tax levy, and 78.6% of all public school funding in our region comes from property taxes. And whereas the after-tax cost of public education to our local taxpayers has increased since the passage of the Tax Cuts and Job Act, thus threatening the funding and provision of public education in Putnam and Westchester Counties and New York State. Therefore be resolved that the Byram Hills School District calls on the United States federal government to repeal the cap and restore the full state and local tax deduction. If I'm not mistaken, I think we did a resolution several years ago, but the advocacy went nowhere, and this is really the window of opportunity potentially to get this back. So open it up to any questions? Otherwise, that's for a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt it.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Great, okay. With any luck, maybe our residents will get some relief.
Good luck.
Yeah, we're going to need it. Okay, so we have no unfinished business tonight, so we go to the staff reports.
Okay, very happy to have a staff report. So first, COVID-19 update, whoa, maybe not. Maybe you are verifying my Microsoft Excel? I don't really know what that is. First, we'll start with a COVID update, just so that the community is aware of steps that we're taking as a school district to try to have conversations with the County Department of Health and the State Department of Health, especially through superintendent advocacy, to really look for a plan, a review plan and metrics. So we know that we just are not going to stay masked in perpetuity for no reason, that there needs to be some study and analysis that's conducted quarterly or monthly or whatever the case may be, but we actually are asking as school districts for a plan of review. So right now, for example, and this is in constructive collaboration, because we know that it's very difficult with all the different studies and different groups and the taxing on our local Departments of Health and State Departments on Health for vaccines and all of that kind of stuff, that there's a lot of moving parts right now. But we had metrics at one time that said, when we have X percentage of people who are vaccinated, we are not going to have to wear masks, or we are going to, we don't have any metrics right now for schools. We don't know, why, why aren't we being asked how many students are vaccinated? If we have 95% of our students vaccinated, is it really necessary to wear masks? I am not pushing to do this sooner rather than later, I'm just pushing for someone to have a plan, right? Some metrics that they say, at this point, at this point, at this point, we are going to be reviewing, or we are trying to attain this goal. Because right now, I feel like we're, we're not given any of that kinds. And to be fair to the groups that are doing all of this work, they haven't rested, right? And I get that, but I think it's time that we do have a request for something to be put in place that we can measure progress or lack thereof, so that we can validate why we're continuing to practice the behavior. With respect to our local and state Departments of Health, who particularly our local Department of Health, has been absolutely outstanding. So I think it's time for that, and that's our, our ask as collaborative partners with them. That's one. Now, all of the fun news. Congratulations, Alyssa, for the Khan Edison Athlete of the Week. That's pretty incredible. For achievements in the classroom and on the field, we're so proud of her, and I happened to see her play tennis the other day, quite amazing. We have commended national merit students, there are 21 of them here. They are among approximately 34,000 students nationwide being recognized for their academic promise, and they are among the top 50,000 students entering the 2022 scholarship competition. They took that preliminary SAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. So congratulations to our commended national merit students. And I'm sorry, Dylan, the only picture I had of you was when you were a freshman. Dylan, whose work was recently published in the book Regenerative Nephrology, in the second edition, edited by Michael Galagorsky, that is quite an accomplishment and reflective of your work in science research, Dylan. He does look a lot different now, but you can still see Dylan in there. This one's really fun. Congratulations, Amanda Nepo. She's appearing on the broadcast Penn and Teller Fool Us. She's going to be performing magic tricks and trying to fool the world famous team, and appearing on the show is quite a feat, right, for any magician. And it's going to air on October 15th at 8:00 PM, so wow.
She's going to come and do magic tricks.
That is someone who knows how to have fun, right? Our World Languages Honor Society induction this year. I actually had to put a link to the list, which you probably can't read, because there are so many recipients on here, for French, for Italian, and for Spanish. So these were the inductees in 2021, and I think that this--
Wow.
--this says a lot about our students who are immersed in language. And when Melissa was talking tonight about piloting this concept, we know that we have students who want to learn multiple languages, and they probably just don't have time in school. So is there a way that we can start to look at that for them and give them more opportunities? So congratulations to all of those students. And next, our Homecoming 2021. Wow. The PTSA with all of the Bobcat spirit that went on for that week, it was absolutely unbelievable. I had the pleasure of meeting with PTSA this morning to personally thank them. They were amazing, and the entire week culminated with a BHF movie night on the lawn, and this, you know, I never thought we would do better than when we had the eclipse, remember? And I was like so excited to see all of these people on campus doing a fun activity. I have never seen a homecoming week like we have, and ending in that, in that great film, so awesome. Our Spirit Week had a lot of Bobcat pride, you know, these are like my favorite shots ever, from our elementary, and here we have our Wampus kids. We move on to Crittenden, where they look so much older than those Wampus kids already, showing their spirit. Our high school kids who went from building to building, spreading cheer to the kids, and look at that, that was the pep rally.
That's fantastic.
Right? It was absolutely fantastic outside. I was so grateful that they didn't pick me to run with the balloon and break it on the ground and get back up and run across in the race. I actually hid behind some students, I was hoping that nobody would see me making do it. But they were, they had a blast, an absolute incredible blast. These were our, two of our announcers were in there, they just really, they carried the crowd in a way that you would never imagine. And here was one of the clips of one of the homecoming nights, all of our kids out for the whiteout in support of our teams, and of course, our Bobcats with our athletic director, Rob Kostagnat. Just, it was an incredible week, an absolutely incredible week. So thank you to PTSA, to our, to our athletes, our student athletes, to our coaches, to our crew that came to supervise and make sure that everybody was safe. And Gina Cunningham will attest that we are safely out of any COVID contractions at this point, any transmissions. You know, it's something that we, we were concerned about, we didn't think we had to worry because of the outdoor setting, and we are happy to report that we do not have-- yes, that made us very happy. So thanks to everyone who made that week so spectacular for kids and for me, for that matter. It was great. And that's the end of my report.
Good stuff. Tim, you're probably--
Tim's--
We're all reported out. Unless you need more from me, what do you want?
Elementary's admirable as well.
Just real quick, I have started the process with FEMA for reimbursement, submitting all our COVID costs. I've been told that this, this is, this particular emergency is going to be 100% reimbursed, as in the past, it's 75%. So I've began that process. Obviously, the paperwork is cumbersome, but I'm going to keep going on until I get all the costs in, and then we'll, we'll see the process after that in terms of review and resubmission and everything like that. But it is in process, and if everything goes as planned and we get full reimbursement, we're probably talking almost $2 million as opposed to spending. So it's all our expenses in terms of what we bought and the additional staffing that we hired last year, just for that, just for COVID.
Hooray!
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see. It's a process--
But I do have to say that I went into the boardroom and I thought that I was not going to, it was like a hoarder's--
Yeah.
--delight, I mean, the books, the paperwork, that they actually have to--
So every individual, we need every timesheet for each person, and it has to be logged individually, so it's a, it's a bit of a process.
It's a huge manual process, but really worth it. Kelly, thanks for your time on that.
Absolutely.
Great. All right, so anybody have any board reports? Okay. Let's go to Communications. So I think only, one that I'm aware of, which is regarding masking. Anybody else have any? Okay, so then why don't we go to approving the minutes from September 21st? Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
A second? Anybody have any comments, edits, questions? All right, all in favor? And then a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tim.